The Health Scrutiny Subcommittee Committee is our first meeting of the year and our first meeting under a new committee system. So, welcome to everybody and members of the public who are watching. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from Town Hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. So, without further ado, we'll have introductions from all the members of this new committee. Starting, I'll start with myself. I'm councillor Ruth Milstam, Chair of the Committee, and I'll pass over to my left there.
Yeah, I'm councillor Steve Ares. I'm Deputy Chair of this Subcommittee.
Vic Bowden, I'm a substitute on this committee.
Councillor Kevin Oxley.
I'm councillor Anne Murphy, and I'm the councillor for the Manor Castle Ward. Thank you.
Councillor Martin Fitz, councillor for City Ward and Green Group spokesperson.
I'll introduce myself as is also in South York. Councillor Apisam Mohammed for Park Board in Sheffield.
I probably just get a technical hitch.
Sorry about that. I do apologise, Chair. Councillor Gary Weatherall,shire Green Brightside Ward.
Thank you. And just to explain that the make-up of this committee is drawn from the Adult Health and Social Care Committee and the Children's Education, Children's and Families Committee. We will be taking today's items in a different order from that published on the Agenda Pack. So, we're actually going to take items one to six and then move item eight up the agenda, and then item nine, and finally, item seven. Are there any apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair, we've had apologies from councillor Gail Smith with councillor Vic Bowden substituting.
Thanks. And any items for exclusion of the public or press?
No.
And I have to ask members whether they have any interest to declare in any of the items of business on the agenda.
Chair, I'm a patient at one of the GP surgeries affected.
Councillor Weatherall?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Ditto, I'm a patient to one of the hubs. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm a patient at one of the practices mentioned in City.
Okay, thank you. Public questions and petitions is the next item, and I believe we've received two questions from members of the public in writing. The members aren't able to attend in person, so we'll have the questions read.
Okay, the questions are both from Michael Suter, Chair of Sheffield Save RNHS. The first one is, since the CQC audit of Sheffield Teaching Hospitals last year, where they found the trust was no longer good but requires improvement, has the Health Scrutiny Committee followed this report up by monitoring any improvements in the healthcare specifically? Has there been an increase in staffing levels? If so, can you report on them? Has the mental services improved, and can you find out what improvements have taken place? The maternity services are of particular concern due to the ongoing staffing shortages and safety level for patients. Can you inform the public on whether the maternity services have improved and find out what the staffing levels are at present? And the second question is, the new South Yorkshire Integrated Care System Board has not consulted with the public on their constitution or responded to members of Sheffield Save RNHS about the new constitution. This does not bode well for public accountability and transparency. Can the Sheffield Health Scrutiny Committee ensure all meetings of the ICS/ICB are in public and the public are allowed to submit questions? Can the ICB confirm that no private companies will be members of the board? Why has there been no consultation with the public, as there has been in other parts of England and Wales, in the setting up of the board and its functions? We haven't really got anyone in the room today able to answer that question, so I have put it to the ICB, and we'll respond in writing and make sure the response is included in the next set of agenda papers, so it's on the public record. And I believe the Chair will raise the issues in the first question under any other business when we're talking about the work programme.
Yep, that's, yeah, we'll take that under the work programme and provide a written answer to the question again. Thank you. So, our next item is the co-option of a representative from Health Watch. Emily, if I can, can I hand over to you for that?
Okay, so you've got the report which is asking the Subcommittee to co-opt a Health Watch Sheffield representative onto the Subcommittee as a non-voting member. Many of you will be aware that Health Watch Sheffield has been appointed as an observer member to the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee by full council for many years. It's been a really useful way of feeding inpatient and public involvement in scrutiny discussions, and it's kind of provided a framework for the statutory Health Watch scrutiny relationship where scrutiny can refer, Health Watch can refer things into scrutiny if they need to. Under the new council procedurals in our new governance system, this Subcommittee is able to appoint co-opted members itself, so it doesn't need to rely on full council to appoint as an observer member. And our legal team also did advise that the role that Health Watch has tended to play has been more than an observer, it has been as a participant in discussion, so it feels like the most, this is the most appropriate mechanism for carrying on that Health Watch involvement going forward. So, the report recommends that the Subcommittee agrees to co-opt a Health Watch Sheffield representative for the 2022/23 municipal year.
Does the committee agree to that co-option? If you wish to dissent, please raise your hand. Councillor Murphy, are you dissenting?
No.
Okay.
No.
No, if you wish to dissent, please raise your hand. Okay, so that's, that's agreed. Thank you. May I just ask Lucy Davis, who's been attending the previous incarnation of this committee for a long time, just to briefly introduce yourself and give a very tiny outline of your role?
Hi, so I'm Lucy Davis. I'm the Chief Officer of Health Watch Sheffield, and I've been one of the Health Watch representatives who have come as an observer to scrutiny in its previous form. The other person who you might see is Trish Edney, who's a retired GP and a member of our Strategic Advisory Group. Trish often subs for me if I'm not able to attend the meetings. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with Health Watch, which hopefully most of you are, our role is around citizen voice in relation to health and social care issues. So, we're here, I guess, to bring insight into the things that we're hearing from the public, and also to be a sort of critical friend to the committee when thinking about how the public might best be involved and thinking about the impacts on people in Sheffield of the items being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. And on behalf of the committee, can I thank you for all the extraordinary effort that you've put in in Health Watch in Sheffield, and the way that you represent people's voices is really important. Thank you. So, we're going to move on to item eight next, the Primary Care Estate Transformation Plans and Engagement Findings. And we're going to allow an hour and 20 minutes for this item. There's probably a lot to pack in, and there'll be very large reports, and we're probably expecting a lot of questions. So, I'm going to ask the presenting officers to be as concise as possible on the understanding that members will have read the reports to the best of their ability beforehand, so not, not to draw that out too much, if you, if you can keep that to a minimum. I think maybe we say 10 minutes to present, and then we can move straight on to questions. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Abby Tebbs. I'm Deputy Director of Primary Care Contracting, Digital and Estates at the CCG, and I'm the lead for Primary Care Capital Transformation in Sheffield. Today, I've got with me a Dr Terry Hudson, who's the Chair of the CCG, and Lucy Ettridge, who is our Deputy Director of Communication and Engagement, and is our lead for Patient Engagement and Communication on this, on this programme of work. Terry is also a GP in the city, but not at one of the practices that we'll be discussing today. I've been asked to send apologies from Jackie Mills, our Director of Finance, who was due to attend today but isn't able to because she's ill, unfortunately. So, just wanted to open by saying thank you for inviting us to the first meeting of a Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Some members previously served on the Healthier Communities and Adult Social Care Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee, and so will know some detail about this programme of work because we've updated on the proposals twice before. And the last time we did that in March, we talked to you about the plans for the pre-consultation engagement. That was completed in May, and the report on the pre-consultation engagement forms part of the report that we put before you today. So, what we're bringing to you today is the draft pre-consultation business case specifically for the Primary Care Capital Transformation Programme, and those elements of the, how we're dealing with the capital funding that we've received. That business case includes, as I've said before, the pre-consultation engagement findings, the revised proposals within the business case on what we're going out to consult with for, and we'll take you through those very quickly, and also the draft consultation plan and the consultation document. And Lucy will take you through the engagement findings and also the consultation plan. And then, obviously, we'll open up for the questions from the committee. So, as we've previously outlined, the funding that we're using to make these proposed developments was awarded from a national capital allocation to South Yorkshire on the basis of proposals that had already been worked up. And the proposals within Sheffield had been worked up by the practices, and a bid put in, and that was the bid against which this money was awarded. So, the funding that we're talking about has got some very strict national conditions attached to it, and we have to meet those in full if we're going to be successful and receive the, receive the funding. The first one of those is obviously that we have to use it for the purposes laid out in the original bid, and for that purpose only. So, in that case, it means that we can only use it to fund the development of these health centres. We can't use the money to build in other areas. And if the funding isn't used, then it will be returned to the ICB, who will, who will consider whether we can use it elsewhere within South Yorkshire, within the timescales that are available for the project, and if not, it will be returned to Treasury. The proposals have to meet Treasury requirements around affordability, so that's both in terms of the capital funding, but also the ongoing costs of running the hubs. They have to offer value for money, and they have to demonstrate robust process of option appraisal through the Treasury's business case process. Any new buildings have to be in public ownership. That is a requirement of this funding for the primary care developments. And so, we've been working as CCG with Sheffield City Council to identify suitable council-owned locations in order to satisfy that, that criterion. And finally, the buildings must be completed by December 23. That gives us a very tight deadline to work to, but it is achievable. We can deliver these, subject to approval, within that timescale. So, first of all, I'll hand you over to Lucy. He'll take you through the outcome of the pre-consultation engagement.
Thanks, Abby. Hi, everyone. I'll just be very brief because I know that you've read papers, but there is a lot of information to take in. So, we reached a large number of people in quite a short period of time. I think the engagement was just launched the last time we came to committee, and we reached over 2,000 people. We actually added in some public meetings following the feedback of this committee, and I think specifically Lucy. The views we got back were mixed, and they were dependent on actually where the practice that people were currently registered with and the health centre that we're proposing. The majority of people agreed that more investment was needed in their area, but actually, the majority of people also told us they weren't willing to travel, and actually, the majority told us they couldn't get to a new health centre if, if the health centres were to go ahead. There was no consensus really whether the proposals were a good idea or not, but actually, we had slightly more that disagreed with that than agreed. And I think there's strong views that people like the ideas of more services within the health centres, and there was strong support for diagnostics, and there was strong support for mental health services as well. The main concerns that came out were the distance to travel, and particularly issues around public transport, and a lot of people were concerned about vulnerable people, particularly older people, people with mobility problems, and single parents, and how they would get there or even afford to get there. So, I think, you know, the cost of living was a factor here. But people actually did want investment into services, but, and also, another big thing that came out was concerns over current provision. A lot of people, you know, weren't happy with current provision and access to, to services. So, these findings have been shared with practices, so we shared the interim findings, so they had lots of time to go through it, and also the more detailed qualitative analysis has been shared in the last few weeks. And this has informed their decision-making about whether they wanted to proceed with the consultation or not, and the views have also shaped their pre-consultation business case, which is with you today. Second on to the consultation plan. So, this was actually presented in March, but it has been updated since then. So, it's with you today to comment and note. And hopefully, you will see that we're proposing to use a wide, wide range of methods because we know that there isn't one method that suits all. We have to try lots of different things to ensure that, you know, marginalised voices do come through. We're proposing surveys, so sort of online paper, but also, we're going to commission a research agency to do 1,000 surveys in each of the health centre areas to give us a statistically reliable sample. Lots of public meetings are being proposed, and we will come to the local area committee. And public meetings, we've learnt from the pre-consultation engagement, we're going to have lots at the start, we're going to have some in the middle, and lots at the end, a mix of time of day, a mix of venues, and a mix of face-to-face and online. We're also going to fund over 20 community organisations to reach those people that, you know, might not have a phone, so they won't pick up from the research agency, they might not actually go into the practice, or, you know, they, they might not, you know, want to come to a public meeting or be in touch with statutory services. And following the feedback last time as well, that we've built into the timetable a readers' panel, so we make sure the survey and all the communication materials are censured check for understanding, censured check that actually we're being open and transparent, that it covers, you know, the good things and perhaps, you know, some of the potential disadvantages of the proposals. So, we've currently shared the draft consultation document, which is with you today, and the survey, with a readers' panel, which includes a couple of councillors from the committee, some practices, some patient reps, and members of the public as well. Some people are aware of it, and some people that aren't aware of it, to really get a range of views, and actually, maybe how we can change some of our messaging. So, and then that's, and that's so I would like to end, so we're happy to take any questions, unless Terry wants to say anything.
No, nothing from me.
Yeah, we're happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much for the, that, the outline of the reports. That's great. So, we will move straight on to questions. I'm sure members have got plenty of questions. Lucy, Abby, councillor Mohammed's hands, and councillor Ares, and councillor Oxley. Councillor Mohammed?
Chair, I have a long list of questions. Can I ask that other people go first, because I don't want to just sort of take the floor? I'll probably be a while. Is that okay?
Absolutely, okay. Thank, thanks for being upfront about that. Very happy to take the long list of questions. But, yeah, let others come in first. So, councillor Ares?
Yeah, I'm sure my questions will be covered by Apisam, I'm sure. But when we, when we, this item came to our predecessor committee in March, part of the consultation exercise was to involve elected members in the readers' panel. But because of the pre-election regulations, we, that wasn't possible at that point in time. Just wondered whether any, you know, whether members were actually involved in, in some way in, in that thing.
Well, thanks for your question, councillor. And we've actually only contacted the readers' panel last Friday because we've only just written all the communication materials. And we've only contacted councillor Mohammed and, and the Chair. Thinking, our thinking was that the other materials are with you today, but we're quite happy to send it, all the documents, to committee so you can feedback to the readers' panel.
I think that would be helpful, Chair.
Yeah, we can get that out today.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I just ask a question about that, please, Lucy? What, what's the timescale for the readers' panel looking at that document? And does that have any bearing on the PCCC meeting on Thursday?
No, it doesn't have a bearing on the meeting on Thursday, just because we don't have time to, basically, the papers for Primary Care Commissioning Committee were pretty much the same, the papers that you got, because we didn't have time to amend. I think the deadline for the readers' panel is the start of next week, because our timetable is we're going to start consultation on the 18th of July, and working back from that, a key milestone for us is having all our copy agreed and designed to be with the translators on the 1st of July, and we want all our materials to be printed and available in community languages on day one. So, it is incredibly tight.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Ares, if you're interested in seeing the materials and commenting as part of the readers' panel, can we, we could expedite that to councillor Ares? Yeah. Would you? Okay, councillor Oxley?
Thank you, Chair. As a new member of the committee and reading your excellent report for the first time this morning, you've obviously done an awful lot of work, and there's a clear business need for doing what you're looking to do. It's, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a no-brainer, but obviously, there's, there's concerns. In terms of the feedback that you've had already, the major concern was, was distance for people to try and access that. Now, given, looking at all the proposed hoods, hubs, they're, the most they're, they're away from the current practices is a mile. So, on paper, that doesn't look too much, but obviously, when you looked, look at each of the GP's catchment area, that might add, depending on what, where that catchment covers, people on the outer, the outer scale of that catchment area, then might need to travel that, that, that extra, extra bit. And some of the other concerns and some of the other feedback on there was, were along the lines of, could this money be used for other reasons and whatever? So, for me, there was just a question in terms of that initial consultation, did you get that consultation right in terms of pushing the positives, if you like, of what this would bring? And for any future consultation, would you then restructure any information that you provided to the patients to try and allay those major fears first in that consultation document? Your, your consultation proposal was very good. It outlines and covers all the various issues that people were, were, were expressing in, in the feedback that you provide us. But do you need, do you think you need to do that slightly different to present that information upfront better?
So, sorry, let me just check, I understand. So, you're suggesting that maybe we've described the, the concerns people had, maybe we need to talk about some of the other issues or the other benefits? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, because, because in terms of the feedback you got, it was all basically, the top three, if you like, was, was how far extra have I got to travel? How am I going to get there? Where am I going to park? Why can't we spend this money on more GPs, more nurses, rather than building? So, it, it just struck me in reading that, that, those responses, that we need to react better next time you go out to consultation to allay those fears right at the, at the start of either whatever documents you, you provide, or when you start that consultation. Because no one likes change, and, and people always fear that change, even if you're building a great, big, massive, shiny new building with better services, better access, and it's in the community. But so, my advice, if you like, was just look at that, how you're doing that consultation to make sure you're allaying, allaying those fears first off.
So, part of that would be around how we describe the model of service, if you like, that, that's offered in the buildings, so as well as the GP services being more specific about what other services or, or opportunities are provided to, to, to patients and the public within those buildings. The difficulty we have is some of that, is that work is still ongoing. So, at the moment, we can describe, obviously, we can say the GP services will be there, and we can describe an outline of, of what other services might be available, but we can't be as specific as we would like to be at this point. So, I, I take your point, and it is, we'll reflect on it, yeah.
Another big fear, if you like, in that top three, top five, was, does this mean my GP practice is going to merge? Have I got then less access to the GPs? Will GPs from other surgeries then be, be covering our patient list, so it's more difficult to get appointments? So, again, for me, they were all concerns that we could quite easily address right at the top of that consultation, and then really get people to focus on what those benefits could be.
That's really, that's helpful, and we'll, and we'll take that away, Lucy, to see whether we can be more upfront at the beginning of the documentation to, to almost allay people's concerns about the things that we feel they shouldn't be concerned about, like mergers, like, you know, seeing GPs from another surgery, that type of thing.
Because then you, you.
Focuses, yeah.
You're getting over those key, three key barriers really as to why people might be against it, but again, obviously, I'm, I'm not, I don't know those, those, that those areas particularly well in terms of the services and the premises and whatever, so I'm sure Apisam does. Another question I've got was, it wasn't, there was nothing in the document in terms of what the liability would be for Sheffield City Council. Obviously, you build the buildings, those buildings then have to become public domain. Sheffield City Council then have to have ownership of those buildings. So, what is the liability for Sheffield City Council in terms of statutory maintenance, ongoing maintenance, and improvements that might need to be done in, on those sites? Thinking about the perilous state of, of our current finances, this would add an ex, would this add an extra burden, or is this already taken for, taken care of in terms of the planning going forward?
It's, it's taken care of. The, the, the agreement, the agreement is, is, that's in place, is that there should, there would be no additional cost in council. Sorry, Joe, would you like to?
Happy to come in on, on that point. We will be bringing a report, a decision report through to the Strategy and Resources Committee shortly. We're just working, working on that report at the moment, and that will deal with, with the partnership arrangement that we would be engaging in. That will set out, we anticipate it will be a two-stage process, and there'll be, first of all, the requirement to approve in principle that we progress with the feasibility work on the sites and the basis on which we do that, and the way in which we, you know, we manage risk relating to both parties. And we expect then that once the consultation is concluded, that we would want to bring a final decision report back to Strategy and Resources Committee, I think it would be, before we enter into that final agreement around the properties, the land, and the landlord and, and development partner arrangements. So, that's the approach that we're going to take in order to ensure that we've got that clarity around the governance and, you know, the costs and risks that we're entering into. But the, the programme is, the intention of the programme and the principle of it is that there is, you know, net zero impact on, on our, on our council finances as a result of this. But thank you, it's, it's a good point.
Thank you. Another couple of little ones, sorry. In the document, you talk about the build, the build has to be finished by December 22, but, but you said just now it was December 23. So, the document talks about December 22, not 23.
Okay, so it should say December 23, so I will, it should say December 23. So, I, we will go back and double-check that there had, there hasn't been a, that there aren't any errors.
And in terms of, as long as the instruction is made, then does that mean that the building has to be complete and handed over by December 23? then does that mean that the building has to be complete and handed over by December 23? And can we actually, I know you say that we can meet those timelines, but can we actually meet that timeline? Because that is pretty tight.
It is very tight, but we are confident that we'll be able to meet those timelines.
Thank you, Jo, and thank you.
Thanks for that, very good questions, thank you. councillor Phipps and then councillor Murphy.
Thank you. Thanks Chair. I'm going to ask some questions around the city practice, if that's okay, because let's see what council have got particular interest there. I know it's been pulled for this consultation, but I just kind of want to understand what the effect of that will be and kind of what's happened there. So just to make sure I'm not imagining this, at one point did Devonshire Practice say they were interested? And now, do you want to do questions?
Do you want to do it one in turn? Yeah, so Devonshire Green were originally part of the process, part of the discussion. They chose to withdraw and therefore we had to reassess the scheme to determine whether it was still viable to continue without Devonshire Green. It is, but what it does mean is that we need to find a new location because the location that had been identified is now too large, which is why it's not part of the consultation at this point. Because we can't consult without a proposed location or locations to consult on.
Thank you. Do we know why Devonshire Green, is that commercially sensitive or?
It's personal to the practice. They decided for sort of personal reasons within the practice, none of the practices within any of these schemes. There is no requirement or we are not mandating that practices become part of this. So at this point, what we've asked practices to do is reaffirm that they want to continue looking at the proposals. But ultimately, they won't have to make a final decision until the autumn on whether they, you know, they won't have to make a final commitment until the autumn. So part of that process is then determining whether it's right for them in terms of not only their patients, but also their partnership and their aspirations for their future. And we, as part of that, we also shared with them, we also provided the practices with independent financial advice. And it was the decision of the partners at Devonshire Green that they didn't wish to proceed any further.
Thank you. Just thinking again, looking at the response rate from City, it was really, really low. It was just 20 out of nearly 2,000 responses. And thinking again about the timelines, this slightly linked, slightly not linked. I mean, will it be possible for City to have a hub if it's already squeezed pressured timeline wise for those that will go into the consultation? Given that they're going to have to go later, they'll be really, really squeezed. And what lessons have we kind of learned from the City consultation if we do come to that point to get a better response rate? And also bearing in mind that the only public meeting for City had no one turn up.
I think we've learnt a lot from the consultation, from the pre-consultation engagement about how we engage people across all the areas. But I think, as you point out, City is, particularly now that we're focusing on at Clover City Practice and Mulberry, we need to be very specifically targeted to make sure we get a very good, broad, you know, we capture as many views as possible. And there are groups, I think, that we will engage with in consultation that will enable us to do that far better. We are comfortable at the moment that we will be able to proceed with the City Hub. But that is dependent on us finding an appropriate location quite quickly. Lucy, is there anything you wanted to add about the consultation?
Yeah, I think we were hampered slightly by it being an election, pre-election period. So we couldn't do the usual publicity that we would like. So I think that affected the turnout at the City Centre public meeting. But when we go to consultation, so we will commission an independent research company to do a survey, so we'll be guaranteed a good sample size. But to get to those marginalised groups, in the original plan, we've taken out all the City Centre groups. We're going to fund City of Sanctuary, Refugee Council, you know, Benning Centre, working with student populations as well. There were lots of city-based community groups, working with sort of more transient populations that we did want to fund to bring in their voice. But yeah, so there's lots of learning from the pre-consultation engagement.
Thank you, thanks Chair.
councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Mine is pretty similar to councillor Phipps. I'm quite concerned that we're not really getting a true reflection of the voice of the people in the areas that you've been doing the consultation with. And I'm just wondering how many impact assessments you've done in those areas and whether or not we can be privy to those impact assessments for local people. I mean, 2,000 is not a very good rate of reply and response, considering the size of the numbers of surgeries and the populations within those areas. And there are a lot of community groups in central in particular. But it's not a very good reflection really in terms of feedback from local people. And I can't really see, it doesn't hit me, it doesn't come out to me that we're responding in a very positive way to the feedback from the people that you've actually already heard from in a manner which responds to their concerns that actually another consultation doesn't stop and think about the concerns and give some appropriate consultation and answer to their concerns. It just says, oh, we'll just hold another consultation process and we'll try and get more feedback from more people. That's not always the answer to an initial consultation period where people are clearly saying, we want the investment and we want the money and we think it's a great idea, but there are several concerns we'd like you to deal with first, like transport, like access, like, you know, are we going to be able to remain under the same GP services and practices that we've been with? And I don't really see that coming forward. And obviously, as the representatives of the people in our areas, we would like to be able to go back there and say that the work's been carried out on their behalf in order to answer very clearly those kind of concerns that people have brought to you already. Thank you Chair.
Okay, so I think probably the first thing is that the work that was done engaging with the public was a pre-consultation engagement, not a consultation. Notwithstanding that, we have learnt a lot and done and developed a lot more detail around how we will ensure that we get much more, much more reach with the consultation. Lucy, do you want to pick that up first?
Yeah, so the overall sample size is really good. You know, for 2,000, for a population the size of Sheffield is good, but it's not very good at a practice level, which is what we were hoping for. So we will look at that with the consultation. But Abby's right, this was a pre-consultation engagement. So this was just getting people's early reactions to the proposals, thinking about, you know, what they wanted, sort of, you know, any potential services they'd want in there. And it was to give the practices initial feedback to see about whether they wanted to stay in the process or not. Now we've formalised the plans, now we're out to consultation. So it's not going out with a bigger group of people, it is actually doing the formal bit. So really looking into the impacts that the proposals might have on certain populations. And within the pre-consultation business case, we've actually got the analysis from the equality impact analysis. And we've done an equality impact analysis of each of the four of the health centre areas. We haven't done the City Centre one yet because we knew we were putting that on hold for a bit. And within that, we clearly do articulate some of the impacts by protected characteristic. And in there, we propose some mitigations as well. But because we haven't got to the point of making a formal decision about whether we go ahead or not, we're not able to then build in the mitigation into the proposals we're consulting on for the reason that the timetable is really, really tight. So, you know, the colleague behind you talked about, is it possible to get to the buildings being constructed by December 2023? It is, but we have to do some things in parallel. So in an ideal world, we would have done the pre-consultation engagement, spent a few months looking at it and actually maybe looking at gaps and going back out and things before we did the formal consultation, but we just don't have time. The latest we can start the consultation and still meet the decision-making date, which is December 2022, is July. So that is built into the pre-consultation business case, but we don't yet, we can't give people all the reassurance that they need, I think, at this stage. I think is what you're getting at, that we need to reassure people more before we actually go out to consultation. Unfortunately, we're not in a position for all the concerns, but by the time we get to making a decision, we will be.
And I think it's just worth reiterating that that time scale, this very conflated time scale is not, as Lucy said, we would have wished for a much longer time scale to be able to do this. We were unable to make these plans public until just before the, until just before the pre-consultation engagement took place. And that was a National NHS England decision. We have been waiting for permission to actually start making some of this process and these discussions public. And we only got that just before we went out for pre-consultation engagement. So that, what we are trying to do is fit within that national, those national requirements and the national decisions in order to do this. But yes, acknowledging that we would have wished for significantly more time. Just to pick up on the time scales, just to go back to councillor Phipps's point, it might actually be worth just pointing out that in terms of the compressed time scale for the City Centre, the other thing I didn't mention is that City Centre would be a refurbishment, not a new build. And therefore, we can allow some slippage at the other end of the, at the end, you know, we can push the consultation back a bit because it's not a new site, it will be a refurbishment, so the development period will be shorter. But yes, in terms of some of the points you've said, I think there's a mixture of things though. Some, as we've said before, we can allay people's concerns about now. For example, you know, will I still be registered with my practice? We've sought to do that, but we've taken the point from councillor Oxley that we could be much more upfront about setting some of those concerns completely aside as part of this. But in terms of what the engagement told us and the changes, as Lucy said, part of that was A to inform how we describe the consultation and also to inform the practice's decision-making process. And the pre-consultation business case does reflect some of that. So there have been a number of changes to the proposals following the pre-consultation engagement. So for example, in Foundry Hub 1, there were initially two sites that were proposed, depending on whether Pittsmore Surgery wanted to pursue the do maximum option of all practices relocating or not. Pittsmore have decided in light of the issues that have been highlighted through the engagement work that they are going to remain where they are and pursue an intermediate option. And therefore, what we're proposing to consultant is a different model with Burngrief Surgery main site and branch site and Sheffield Medical Centre relocating to a hub that's next door to Sheffield Medical Centre. So, and there are a number of changes with the other hubs that reflect similar decisions by the practices. So again, with Sapa, you can see that there are some decisions from Elm Lane, for example, that they won't join the hub in light of the location. And therefore, that's a change for a group of patients that would have had to travel furthest. Part of the document, part of the document, the pre-consultation business case, is some mapping on where patients live in relation to their current practices and in relation to the proposed health centre or hub sites. And we are continuing to work on that in parallel to the consultation to understand further some of the impact around that as we listen to what patients have to say.
Thanks. I'm going to take a question for myself next. I just want to ask a really straightforward, layman's terms question. Is this the only way to bring wraparound and enhanced clinical services into community-based primary care? Which is the long-term objective? It goes back to the development of the PCNs and that was always an objective stated with development of PCNs that there would be enhanced services in our communities. So are there other routes available if this funding is not used for this project? Still to bring more of the enhanced and wraparound services into community-based primary care? And I'm just curious noting that there's a mention on page 53 of the pre-consultation business case, that there is a mention in the carry-forward option route, the amber option, if you like, that there is an option for CCG and plus GP contribution funding. That's sort of suddenly appeared at that point in the report. So I'm just quite intrigued about that. And if that does mean there's actually, you know, a fallback option, as it were, if this funding is not used.
So in response to the first bit, is it the only way to bring wraparound services into the practices? The answer on that one is no. As you pointed out already councillor Nelson, the kind of national direction of developing primary care networks and wraparound services, is something that the CCG has been supporting, it's something that our practices have been moving forwards with. But one of the things that we have to consider in bringing wraparound services directly into community locations are the constraints of the estate that currently exist. So some of the practices listed that are involved in this consultation, you know, some of them are still working out with terraced houses. It is not viable, it's not possible for them to magic up more space in their practice, say for a mental health worker, for a pharmacist and so on and so forth. Now, obviously, those members of additional staff from wraparound services are based across a network. So they'll be working across a number of sites. But in order to ensure that those services are based as close to people in the communities, obviously, you're going to want to be able to offer that from a number of different sites within the single network. So no, it's not the only way. However, the existence of new buildings, new estate, new hubs, whatever turns out to happen, are the options that give us the greatest flexibility over estate. Part of it, as you mentioned, is around primary care networks. I think we need to be a little bit more imaginative generally as a system about the potential use for these hubs as we go forwards. So, you know, lots of discussion in the pre-consultation from the public has been around where the GPs are housed. But actually, this is more broadly consideration of other health services, of community services. I think there's a great opportunity there for social care for voluntary organisations. And as we pointed out at the beginning, the potential for diagnostics to be brought out of big, complex hospital environments closer to where people live. I'm going to hand over to Abby just on the technical point around the funding, if that's okay.
Thanks Terry. Before I just go on to that point, I think it's worth saying that in terms of estates, while, completely correct, it's not the only option, but estates in primary care in Sheffield is constrained already. Practices have very, very little space. So we know across the city there are existing services which would like to have or re-establish their practice or network level of service offer and are currently unable to find sufficient space in practices to make that viable. The other thing to bear in mind is that, and I think this is where it comes back to the technical point, I think what you're talking to, I will check afterwards to make sure I've answered this correctly because I haven't got time to check the business case, is the, I think what you're talking about is the traditional route to capital development for practices, which is a model whereby we would use business as usual, capital funding from NHS. which is, which is a, a model whereby we would use business as usual, capital funding from NHS England. And there would be a split arrangement between, a split funding arrangement between the CCG passing that capital funding through and the individual practices themselves. That's the model that is being used in some of the other smaller developments that are discussed as part of this overall programme but aren't subject to consultation because there isn't the level of change. In order to do that at this scale, we would require significant, much more capital funding through those routes than we have available to us. Through the business as usual route. So if we wanted to make the number of changes to individual practices that would be the equivalent of what we're trying to achieve here, the amount of funding we would, capital funding we would need far exceeds what we would have available through a business as usual route on an annual basis. Does that, is that clear?
That is clear. Are there any further rounds of government funding likely that could be bid for on a different basis by Sheffield?
Not as I am aware of at present, you know, I can't say there, there won't be. This is wave four of, of, of capital development, so there may be in the future. What I, what we can't say is if we've had this opportunity and have not taken it up, how, how likely we are to be considered for further funding. And I think some of the, certainly some of the criteria around this funding, I would not expect to change in any future funding. So the value for money, the expectation that it aligns with the national direction of travel around, around primary care at scale. And also the, the business case process and the expectations around that would be the same. I would not expect those to change if any, if any funding were made available within the current, within the current parliament.
Just, if I may, just add to what, what Abby has said there, just to put it in context. I imagine most committee members are aware of this, but in case you are not. General practices don't operate generally out of NHS-owned buildings. So the majority of practices in our city, so the, the physical location, the building is owned by the partners in that practice as, as independent contractors and as independent businesses providing services on behalf of the NHS. That is one route, so, and when we're thinking about capital funding and that matched funding offer, we would be asking those small businesses that are the practices to be contributing to the estate themselves. The second option, or the second way in which GP services are housed, i- is that they rent the building from a landlord. And therefore in terms of thinking about potential expansion or changes of use in the building, it becomes more complicated then, that it isn't an internal business decision, it's actually having to put a case forward to a landlord for repurposing that building, and that becomes rather complex. So although that, that isn't directly answering the question there, I think it just helps put into context why it's, we've got these challenges between the national funding and what a local offer might look like.
Thanks, that does answer the question, I'm going to move on, actually.
Sorry, can I just?
I'm going to move on because there's loads more questions, sorry. I'm going to bring Lucy, Steve, I have seen you, but you've, since you've already been in, I'm going to try and prioritise others, if that's okay. Lucy.
Thank you. I've got two questions, so the first one relates to, I guess, the complexity of the consultation that's planned. So the plan is really thorough and it's really good to see in there all the different elements that you're bringing to it and the different approaches that are going to be taken. I think we've already acknowledged that there's a real challenge around timescale and that particularly given the complexity of the populations for these areas, you'd be really ideally wanting a longer timescale than the one that we've got. So recognising that that's kind of where we are with that, I guess. Just wanting to ask about the sort of checkpoints through the process in terms of what will be, how will you kind of measure whether you're meeting the kind of critical sort of touchpoints, if you like, so sort of halfway through, have the groups that you're hoping to fund been able to pick up that work? How many people from the different communities have you heard from? And are there sort of plans in place or sort of mitigating measures that you might take if it doesn't look like you're going to hit the numbers and the sort of diversity of the voices that you need to reach? And I keep saying this a bit like a broken record as well, but you've sort of listed a lot of voluntary set of groups and it was just asking the question again about whether or not you've already been in touch with those groups and whether or not we're confident that they're able to pick up that work. Because they will be a really key bit of the jigsaw, I think, in reaching those different communities. So that's the first one. The second one was just picking up on something that a few people have already touched on really, which is about the feedback from this first phase. And I think first of all, just to comment, I think, again, there's real learning here about the message that went out to the public about what this was. Because although we keep saying this wasn't a consultation, I do think that for the majority of people out there, that's how they experience, that they perceived it. So I think there's a sort of further risk in how this is presented, because the words pre-consultation engagement will mean nothing to most of the public. So I just think there needs to be a real careful approach to explaining, I think as Anne and others have touched on, explaining why this conversation is happening again. And again, people have taken the time to feed in the, to feed into that first phase. How will they know what has been said by others and what, what has been changed as a result? And I'm particularly thinking about the surgeries perhaps that are no longer part of it. So for their patients who won't be receiving the next consultation, how will those patients know what was done as a result of the survey that they may have filled in? And I've just realised at the start of the meeting, I didn't declare an interest because I wasn't technically part of the meeting then, but one of my surgeries also impacted by this work, so just to declare.
Thanks Lucy, is your practice Pittsmore though? Yeah, so it's not, yeah. Yeah, okay. So yeah, thanks for your questions, tough ones. So I'll take the first question first about the checkpoint. So we will look at response rates and by demographics on a weekly basis. And governance-wise, about halfway through, we're going to get the half-point analysis and looking at our response rates to our Equality Engagement Committee, so known as SPEAK. And it's a CCG committee, but we are going to keep it for the lifetime of this consultation. So what does success look like? So definitely overall response rates and the learning from the pre-consultation engagement was, you know, we had a great response rate from First Park, for example. And I think, you know, Melrose Surgery, which is a branch site, we had one. So I think we would like to see response rates in proportion to the practice size. And definitely looking at, hopefully in the consultation report, you've seen the demographic profiles. So looking at some of the, we know the challenges around language or. So we want to hopefully see a response rate, you know, we're not just going to look at, you know, we've got, we've heard from thirty percent from ethnic minority background, we're going to look and actually say, well, have we heard from people from a Bangladeshi background? Have we heard from Somali background? And if, you know, we're going to monitor it weekly and if at the halfway point we've got any real concerns, then we'll look at either moving the resource in the community groups. Say for example, we might have, you know, we're funding three anchor organisations. And say the anchor organisation in Foundry, we've funded them and they've got their consultation plan, you know, which covers all sorts of populations and all the geographical areas. And if we're seeing we've got a good response in one area, not in the other, then we'll shift their focus into the other area. And we're going to do that, so we're going to look at that week by week. And then, you know, and if we want to fund, we need to fund other community organisations, we'll give them a bit more money to help with their reach. And we do appreciate that it's summer holidays and, you know, their teams might be off, that, yeah, we just need to fund it. So it's far from ideal in terms of the time period. Like you say, the ten weeks, you know, do we need longer? Ideally we would, but we know who the people are. We know that they're registered with those practices, so they're probably easy to identify, not necessarily reach, but easy to identify than if it was a citywide consultation, say for example, on the future of A and E. So yeah, we can be a bit more targeted. We have contacted the community groups and, yes, and the, most of them have indicated that they want to be involved. And another thing, so the independent research we've commissioned, we are being quite flexible and the organisation said that they might be able to do some face-to-face as well, so actually they can go, you know, on street and in situ and get to people that might, you know, might not necessarily have a, you know, current, a mobile phone. Very good point about, people saw the pre-consultation engagement as a consultation. And I think it's because we gave too much information for engagement and not enough for a consultation, and we did pitch that wrong. And we will build in, you know, the you said we did into our comms and feedback to the patients. We are including the practices that have since withdrawn from the programme. But it does make it more complicated, which I think is why we really value the views of the readers panel if it's not coming out strongly enough. And I think we do need to clarify, you said we did, well, you told us actually this was a concern and actually this is how it's reflected in the pre-consultation business case. Yeah, so we've, we've still got, yeah, a few weeks, we'd like longer to build that in, but yeah, so very good points, thank you. Did that answer all your questions?
Thank you, brilliant. Good to bring in councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Chair, it's probably a good point that I've come at this point because it's taken off a lot of my questions that other people have asked. So I'm just going to focus on the north-east of Sheffield and the surgeries that are affected there. I'm going to try and group the questions into different areas as well because there are a number. So firstly, looking at the rationale for this because the business document we weren't given before in the previous scrutiny. So I'm looking at some of the, the information that's in the, the business case. Then looking at patient engagement and some of the feedback that's come there and the equality impact assessment that's at the back of the report. So I think in terms of the, the rationale, I'm still not clear why we have a focus of the north-east here. So I recognise that deprivation is a key point. But in the, in the, the business plans, I refer to it as the business plan, is it the business plan? I'm sorry, it's the business case. So at page twelve of the business case, it makes reference to a number of surgeries across Sheffield that have issues in terms of the buildings, the assets that are there and them not being appropriate. And I think you mentioned eighty-six practices across Sheffield that don't have adequate buildings. So I think based on that, I'm not sure why the, sort of the four health centres are just being imposed on the north-east. Given that there are areas of deprivation across Sheffield, and I don't need to list those areas, you know, we're aware of where those areas are. There is an evidence base, so page forty-one of the business case, it makes reference to this being predicated upon a robust evidence base, Case for Change, which includes the rationale for why expanding the primary care estate in Sheffield is required. I couldn't find this robust evidence base, I'm not sure if that's a separate document that you're referring to. There wasn't anything in here that's told me why this is happening in the north-east of Sheffield. But what I did gather from this, and this was from the, the SOs, the spending objectives, is that what SO stands for? Strategic objectives, the rationale as to why we're going with this. And it felt very asset-driven, that I think the, the whole issue was about buildings in Sheffield not being appropriate to expand or to have additional services put in, that it felt very much about buildings. And, you know, there was mention of buildings being an issue in terms of GP recruitment, which, you know, I wasn't quite sure where the evidence base was for that. So, yeah, so it felt very much about assets and buildings not being fit for purpose. Cost efficiencies, saving money at the expense of patients as well, I felt were, were in there as well. But in exploring the viability of the proposals, I think the, the question that I had in relation to the rationale was at page fifty-three. So this is the, the table that shows us the business as usual, do minimum, do intermediate, do maximum. I couldn't understand the logic for why the carry-forward ones, the yellow ones, weren't being put out for consultation, why it was just only the preferred way, preferred way forward, and why that was the only thing that we were consulting on or was the only plan that was in front of us. So again, not sure why that's there in terms of carry-forward. Page thirty-nine of the business case makes mention of very little room for expansion in existing buildings. And I think one of you mentioned that a lot of GP surgeries are terraced houses. They're not all terraced houses, I think there's a couple that are terraced houses and some of them were purpose-built as GP centres. Pittor Medical Centre, Pittsmore, which is now out of it, Upwall Street, so there's a number there that are purpose-built medical centres. And at the beginning, I should have mentioned that in sort of having the discussions, and it's subsequent to the, the last meeting, I was involved in taking part in the consultation, the public consultations that took place locally. So I attended a couple of the face-to-face meetings, but I also met with GPs at their request. And I'm not going to disclose the contents of that discussion because they've asked, it's kept confidential. The concerns were raised about their level of involvement and what's on the table. And I'm not going to expand further on that because of their request that it be kept confidential. But coming on to this, so just about assets and just focusing on the rationale. Mention is made of the fabric of the buildings requiring improvement. But I think, Abigail, you mentioned that there's no viability to improve or develop existing practices. I couldn't see sort of the reason why that couldn't be in there, because it's not talk, we're not talking about all GP practices, we're talking about some. But that's clearly been discounted as read and not an idea to, to take forward. On page forty-four of the test case, of the business case, it makes reference to, and again, this is all about rationale. It makes reference to how, how this is going to be driven going forward in terms of improving the service for patients, that's how I understood it. And it's clear that we can't ask GPs because of their GMS contract to work more hours. But the whole purpose of this proposal is not to do that, it's just to test the overall viability. So I think the concern that I have here is, you know, we're testing and we're testing at large scale in the north-east of Sheffield. This isn't a test that's being done across the, the city. This is a test where, as usual, areas of deprivation become the guinea pigs for, for things that are not certain to improve patient quality of care. So that's the issue there. Just in relation to GP recruitment, because I think I mentioned earlier that that was one of the things that you mentioned was an issue in terms of recruiting to old buildings. And I don't think that's an issue that's isolated to Sheffield. You know, I checked on the BMA website and I think that's a national issue, which, you know, it's, it's a problem everywhere in terms of GP recruitment. And I'm not entirely convinced, having not seen the evidence, that there is anything here that tells me that old buildings are a reason why we can't recruit GPs. You know, I think at the heart of this and at the heart of the feedback from the consultation was people want a quick appointment to see their GP. But this, this, from the rationale, I'm not seeing anything in there that confirms that this will be a possibility. That it's all tests and viability, but no actual confirmation. So that's just a bit on viability, I'll let you come back on that.
Yeah, I've tried to jot things down as you've been going on, I'm not going to be able to answer all of those points, but I think between us, we, we will be able to, we'll be able to do that one. I think when, and Lucy and Abby will give some more detail on this, one, the north-east of the city. So I think it's really important to put this into context, that this hasn't been a CCG plan that's drawn a circle on a map and said, this is where we're going to, to impose some things. This has very much been involved in the historical background of this, of practices coming together, working out what might work well in their particular areas and submitting a proposal to us to put forward on their behalf nationally. So in that respect, although the CCG is the custodian of this, we are acting as a conduit between our member practices and the NHS England team that is looking at capital allowances. In terms of, as I say, I'll, I'll answer the bits that I can and hopefully Abby and Lucy will, will bring in their other parts. You've mentioned a lot of focus around building. Um, you've mentioned, um, a lot of focus around building and assets, um, and I will just concentrate on those bits. Um, so in terms of cost efficiency at the expense of patient care, um, I, I, I think I probably, um, disagree with that appraisal, um, because the funding, um, for these buildings and their ongoing, uh, rental of those buildings, is a separate funding stream for direct, uh, then, sorry, it's a separate funding stream to, to the funding that is allocated for direct patient care. So I think that's, um, one point that's, um, in, important to note. The second bit, just around, um, GPs raising concerns, um, again, obviously their confidential conversations. Those concerns have not been raised in any significant form to us directly, other than those practices that have withdrawn from this because it isn't suitable for them. And again, just want to underline here that we are not compelling or forcing any of the practices to participate in it. It is their plan and, and as I say, we're working as a, a conduit on the consultation and between, um, the national team and local practices for that. In terms of, um, just, I'll, I'll come to this point at the end, sorry. There are a lot of buildings in, in Sheffield, as you say, you know, there are, some of them are purpose-built, but some of them are, um, you know, in, in disrepair, um, there isn't the funding to do that. And in terms of thinking about GP recruitment, um, so this isn't about recruiting a doctor to see patients. But if we go back to the business model that underlines general practice is that they are independent contractors. And as I pointed out earlier, many of them will actually own those buildings. Now, if you are looking as a, a new GP, um, to go and join a practice, um, the, the building ownership is your personal liability. And if you've got the choice between joining a, a practice, um, that's got a building, you know, uh, councillor Oxley mentioning earlier, there's no liabilities on, on either a building that is rented or a building that's pretty good and in a good state of repair. It is really hard to get people to go and buy into a business, um, with their own personal liability. They will be personally liable for the building if the roof is falling in and, and, you know, there, there, there's a potential for, for a huge, it's a similar thing, you know, they're taking on what amounts to a personal mortgage on that building. And we would all do our own due diligence if we were buying a house, making sure that it was in, in a good state of repair. So, um, that is the, the evidence base, that's what we're hearing through, um, local medical committees, um, across the country. And it is what we hear from, um, the British Medical Association in, in terms of, uh, some of the struggles as, as to why you can't get, uh, GP partners. I'll pass over to the others just to see if there are any specific, and obviously I've not addressed all of the points there, but there are some other areas that the others will be better to, to answer.
Thanks, Terry. Um, okay, so I think as Terry said, why these, you, you have a, you've described a concern around why is this development happening or proposed to happen where it's happening? And that is because those were the practices, Terry said, who came together originally and made the business case. So that is why it is happening, where it's happening. This is absolutely not about the CCG or anyone else wanting to use a particular population as a, to use, I think you described it as guinea pigs for a new model of service or for any other reason. It's, it's the accident of those practices being the ones who, and it may be because they, they deal with, um, that they have populations with greater levels of health deprivation, but wanting to be proactive and look at how they could best serve those populations and submitting a business case on that basis. And this funding was awarded against those business cases that had been submitted. And therefore that's why we are discussing those practices and those populations. We cannot transfer this funding nationally, you, the national rules do not allow us to transfer this funding to any other proposals. So that's why the focus is on those populations. And in terms of what you said about practices having concerns, we meet regularly and have done since we were awarded the funding with those networks, that are putting these, that are working through these proposals and have regular dialogue with all the practices. I think it is inevitable that not everybody agrees on any proposal that's made. And I think it's because of the nature of these, once you start working through the detail and given some of the limit, national limitations we have around these buildings having to be in public ownership and what that means about available sites. There will be concerns that people have to work through about whether those, um, are close to, close enough to their populations or not and the impact on, 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 on their registered patients. So I think that is inevitable that people, and healthy, that people have and express and discuss those concerns at this part in the process. Where we are now is that all the practices involved in the pre-consultation business case process we're talking about have, um, have indicated there that they want to continue with these discussions and they want to continue with this work. But they are at liberty at any point to choose, to choose to withdraw from this. As Terry said, this is absolutely not about us forcing any kind of pre-conceived solution onto those practices or more importantly, onto their patients. You talked about eighty-six practices. I just think it's worth clarifying that we have seventy-six practices in Sheffield with over a hundred buildings being occupied by practices across the city, uh, somewhere in the region of a hundred and fourteen. So we do have a huge number of, of practice sites in the city and not all of them are where you would choose in the twenty-first century to accommodate a practice. And even those buildings that are or were purpose-built for the, for the process, they may well be either because of how they are constructed or because of the size of the site, limited in terms of what further opportunities there are to develop them. Or because of the scale of the development they need, it is not viable to do that work at individual practice level. In terms of this project, it feels very much about the buildings. It is about the buildings, but it is because we know very clearly, uh, with our networks, what, what we need to do to secure sustainable general practice and primary care services. And what we need is a primary care estate and primary care buildings that allow us to do that. So as you said, it is, it's correct, you know, um, these buildings on their own aren't going to solve any problems at all. And I think we're very upfront about that. But what they will do is allow us to implement the solutions we want to implement. So they will allow us to co-locate. They will give us more space, for example, for things like digital access points for patients and members of the population. So that other health services that are increasingly being offered online become more accessible. And it's not just about GPs. You, you talked about, um, GP recruitment. So you're right, there is a national shortage of GPs. The government has promised to increase the number of GPs by six thousand. Whether or not that happens within the time scales, we need to look at other members of staff. And we are actively supporting the development of other roles, clinical roles and non-clinical roles within Sheffield, to support and meet the needs of our population. And they need space in which to practise as well, and that space is not available in a lot of areas. So that is what, you know, uh, this is one of the keys to unlocking increased capacity. GPs themselves, general practices themselves, you're right, um, because of the GMS and PMS contracts, this is not a discussion necessarily, unless a practice wishes to, about extending core practice hours beyond what they are at present. But we also have, um, currently extended hour services operating from six sites in the city. We know that because of space constraints, uh, at least one of those sites has now indicated that they won't be able to accommodate that beyond the autumn. Sorry, and therefore we need to look at other space within primary care, ideally where that can be offered from. And from the first of October, um, that extended, those extended access services will be transitioning to enhanced access services that are offered on a primary care network level. Practices and networks are currently, are currently engaging with the public on what their plans are around those services. But it is possible that they may, well, part of that will include, um, an enhanced, um, offer of standard general practice hours within each of the networks. And this, and this, obviously these, these sites lend themselves very much to that, to that type of offer with, within those networks who are, who are participating in these developments. What else did you say? So, uh, in, I've talked about the GP recruitment, uh, and the national issues. In terms of the, you also talked about the assets and the drive for savings. Obviously, these, these projects need to be delivered within, uh, the capital, um, that is available. That's part of the, that will be part of the treasury test and they need to demonstrate that they operate efficiently and effectively. But we have been very clear and we have agree, and we have agreement from Primary Care Commissioning Committee that any revenue savings that result from practices moving into these, uh, new premises and of course there may be some savings in terms of rent, um, or, or maintenance costs will be reinvested in services and will be reinvested in services in those areas. We have given that commitment. This will not be about, this is not driven by making a financial saving, um, to support the ICB or, or anyone else. This is about, uh, developing, uh, developing buildings that support the services we want to deliver. I think I've covered everything. Oh, you asked about a robust case for change. We have developed, and the primary, and the, and the, uh, and the pre-consultation business case is the step on from the strategic outline case that has been developed and submitted to NHS England for approval. So that forms the first step of the treasury business case process. So that has to describe the strategic, um, the strategic, the strategic case for change and the strategic outline.
Can I just ask, I'm, I'm going to run through my questions, so I'm not going to take as much time, but just as a follow-up from what you just said there about, um, non-clinical staff, can, can I just clarify that you're not, or CCG is not looking for in future to recruit non-clinical staff as an alternative to GPs if we're struggling to recruit them? That what, uh, did I misunderstand that? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um, going on to regeneration, so, um, uh, this again was, um, one of the, um, points that you mentioned as being one of the objectives, supporting local regeneration. So I'll be fairly quick with this. So, uh, again, um, concerns that were raised locally was about the potential for existing buildings, uh, to be closed. And we have empty buildings in our areas, uh, which we are trying to, to address locally, we're trying to fill up, um, local buildings that are vacant. There's a proposal in here to use practice-based pharmacies within the hubs. And this is going to impact on, um, local small businesses in the area. And at one point in the, uh, the, the, the document, it makes reference to back office sharing, which would enable funding to be released to patient-facing staff. So I'm presuming that that means less admin, less finances, um, which means, um, there'll be, um, some loss of jobs there. So how, how does that, taking that in the round about closure of buildings, having empty buildings in, in areas, potential pharmacies, local independent businesses in areas being, being closed and saving back office, um, costs? How will that affect, uh, local regeneration? Or how do you intend for it to support local regeneration?
Yeah, so if I can, uh, I'll just come firstly to the, the question about the point around the pharmacies. So it's, it's pharmacists, um, so that, that is pharmacists as clinically qualified professionals working in the networks. And there is no proposal to close any pharmacies. Okay, I think that's a really important point.
Or you're having a pharmacy in the hub?
There may be, if, if a pharmacy is co-located with a practice, there could be discussions around that. At this stage, there are no discussions, um, and it's not within the CCG's remit to, uh, to, 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 um, make a decision about where pharmacies are. That sits with NHS England and is out of the scope of, of, of these hubs.
Okay, so there's no potential for pharmacies to be moved into the hubs and how will that selection process happen? Is that a separate discussion?
It would be, it'd be separate to it. It isn't part of this proposal. Um, if a pharmacy in the future wanted to move and co-locate and put their, their shop into a hub, there's a, a very, very complex process, um, that they would need to go through with NHS England to move sites. So it, it, it isn't part of this discussion at all. The point around the pharmacies, pharmacists being based in the hubs, um, that's about exploring some of those alternative clinical roles to traditional general practitioners where there may be a shortage. Pharmacists bring a, a, a very different skill set, um, into primary care. And, you know, certainly over probably the last eight, eight or nine years, um, there's been increasing numbers of pharmacists working in general practice. But they are, they are a, a different kind of pharmacist to your community pharmacist that might work in, in your local community pharmacy. So that isn't part of the proposal here. Um, in terms of the back office function, um, again, you know, we talk about shortages, shortages, uh, shortages of GPs, actually shortages of receptionists, uh, practice managers. So this isn't necessarily about, um, cutting jobs. What it is saying is across a network of practices, um, because of the additional administrative burden, some of the additional workloads, some practices are, are choosing to share some of their management, um, or administrative, administrative capacity amongst multiple different sites. And, but co-locating that into a hub, obviously you're, you're going to save on having a desk in three different surgeries, where, you know, three surgeries exist within, within one network. So that would be part of the rationale for that. Again, I think it's really important to point out here, it is not in the gift of the CCG to decide who is hired and who is fired in a general practice. That decision sits at practice level, um, is part of the practices' decision. It can't, certainly can't be something we would consult on here. And even if we said, um, you know, we, we've got some thoughts around workforce, again, we couldn't, we, we could not physically compel a practice to, to change the makeup of its workforce. As I say, they're independent contractors, they're independent businesses and any decision around staffing would, would lie with those practices. We've had no indication during this consultation process, um, that the practices would want to be reducing their staff size at all. And from my experience of engaging with GPs across the city over the last, uh, you know, five years or so is actually they want more, they're all crying out for more staff. So I don't, I don't think that that is a risk. Um, in terms of regeneration, I'll just hand over to Abby on that one.
Thanks, Terry. So obviously if, um, if a practice is currently located in premises that are rented, those premises will then become vacant. For premises that practices own, um, or otherwise occupy, disposal of those, uh, assets of those buildings is part of the business case. So part of the point of this is to, is to recover the value of those assets to support the ongoing, ongoing plans. And whether that's through, um, how that's disposed of hasn't yet been determined as part of this work. That will come through more strongly as we make the financial case, um, at outline business case and full business case level. There are obviously a range of options for that. I mean, it might be, it might be sale of that, that land or that property. Or it might be that there are alternative uses within the health and social care system in Sheffield. Or, or, you know, or other parts of the public sector that those assets can be, those assets can be repurposed.
Thank you. Um, okay, so final, final bit you'd be pleased to know is, uh, patient feedback and engagement. So I'll, um, so it, it jumps a little bit on my part here because I've got, um, separate documents. So, um, the initial, um, pre-consultation engagement, so the summary of all the feedback, the detailed feedback. So as I understand it, um, we had roughly around two percent of the patient population, uh, that responded. There were, um, concerns from patients that didn't receive messages, that didn't, um, get the, the, the information. That came out in the public consultation, uh, so the public consultation events, individuals had found out from social media. The reason why Firth Park had a high rate of involvement was because we as local members did a, a good job in terms of getting that out there. But the, um, the, the feedback was that they weren't getting text messages. And when they did get a text message that told them how to consult, you had to go onto three different webpages to be able to find the link. So helping somebody that came to me, um, he got a text message, had to click on the, the GP's practice website to, to access, um, the information, had to scroll down right to the bottom to the news information. There's lots of other, um, updates that had come up, had to find the CCG information. There's lots of other updates that had come up, had to find the CCG information, then ticked to the CCG website, which was then another link that you had to click on. So I think for people that are not tech literate, ICT literate, it's not ideal. So I think going forward, that definitely needs to be looked at. I think there needs to be a limit into sort of a minimum number of people that you need to consult with. So I think Lucy, you mentioned that you're engaging with an external body to do a certain amount of consultation with patients. Two percent, I would say, of the patient population, whilst that's ideal in terms of citywide consultation numbers, I would say for the scope of the plans that we have in here wouldn't be sufficient enough, taking into account as well the way in which the, the feedback was done. I agree that the, the comment that Health Watch made that in terms of people think that they've already been consulted. So we, we're going to have to overcome that hurdle, that people will think, well, what, what is this next stage all about? You've already asked me, I've already told you, I'm not happy about it. You've made the decision. That's the, the feedback that I'm getting a lot from, a lot from individuals in Firth Park. They only think that this is a done deal and no amount of feedback is going to, is going to change that. So just going through the feedback, on, I mean, just the initial page, two thirds of people were not willing to travel further. You've already mentioned this. Slightly more people disagreeing than agreeing on whether they want health centres. I think the way in which the, the question was initially posed, it, you know, it should have been addressed early on. But I think we recognised in the previous meeting that the way in which questions were done, it was too late to change anything and that would be amended going forward. And I think the one that's most concerning is the fact that six in 10 would not be willing to get to their practice if it was further away. And I think in your document, the business case document, you recognise that the north-east of Sheffield is the most socially economically deprived with the lowest car ownership. So I don't see how the business case document has addressed the fact that people aren't willing to travel further. We've got the lowest car ownership in the area, it's the most deprived, but we've not addressed that point. And I think then, just on the feedback, the, the questions or the tables that were given, there's a net agree at the bottom of the table. So this is where you've broken it down by Foundry 1-2, Sepul 1-2, et cetera. And you've given a list of whether they agree, they strongly agree, and then a net agree at the bottom. I'm not sure that those figures have been calculated properly. On the majority of them, there's a, there's a high disagreement level. I think the only one where I saw a, a small agreement was whether people wanted health centres. But again, I would say that that was a leading question because nobody knew at that point what health centres were within the questionnaire, because there was no initial document that described that to people. So that's just the, the summary on the engagement document. But then I think following on from that, the Equality Impact Assessment in the, the business case makes reference to a number of points. So here, I mean, it's a very honest Equality Impact Assessment in the fact that it recognises from the feedback that's been given, this will impact patient groups who don't drive and need to rely on public transport. It will potentially affect individuals with increased costs. People with specific protected characteristics, it would impact on their travel levels. People have communication barriers. People that might need to see a GP more regularly or are less inclined to visit a GP will be negatively impacted by the consolidation of surgeries into a hub. This means that those most affected will be older patients, carers, primary carers of children. Patients might need to decide whether to register with another GP. However, moving GPs into one area will mean that ultimately worst, which may lead to longer waiting times and ultimately worse patient outcomes. So that's in your Equality Impact Assessment. So based on this information, I then look to see, well, what are you going to do to remedy or to mitigate against that going forward? How are we going to consult against these potential negative impacts? And I was, I, I was disappointed to see that the remedy here is a minibus. We're going to have a minibus that's going to go around areas. And who's going to cost that? How would that work? Is it going to go around people's homes? Is it, you know, the, the logistics of the most difficult thing of the most vulnerable in the north-east being unable to access or travel further distances, have no car ownership because it's, that's the, the sort of the information that's, that's here in terms of the, the demographic profile. And the, the, the solution for this would be a, a dedicated minibus. So then going on to the NHS configuration four tests, where this is the four tests, which the NHS says you've got to look at for service changes. And in there, it requires strong public engagement. So this is at page 76 of the report where it says, strong public and patient engagement. So this is part of the requirements that you've got to look at, that you've again mentioned in this, in this report, the four tests, the four hurdles that you've got to overcome. And you've suggested the extensive public engagement on the proposals to understand what matters to most to local people, which has overwhelmingly come back as we can't travel further. We have used the outcomes of this feedback to shape our plans for primary care services in scope. And we have considered the views while developing this. I've not seen that, so I've not seen how this feedback has been incorporated into what we're going to do one, two, three, four better. It still means, especially for the, the patients with Sepul 1, that they will have to continue to travel further. The pre-consultation engagement and communications programme has, again, that's how you've met the, the first test. So I'm not, I'm not convinced, but given the feedback, given the Equality Impact Assessment, which, you know, is, is honest, you know, you've done this Equality Impact Assessment and the remedies to the Equality Impact Assessment has covered how you'll meet the first hurdle of the NHS four tests of strong public and patient engagement. I don't think that that's there. It may be there for the consultation, so you, you might argue that this is just the pre-engagement stage for the, the next stage, you know, we, we will be able to, to, to address these, these queries, these, these concerns. And then just finally, on the distance travelled, so I'm losing my papers now. So distance travelled, page 73 of the document. So here, I think there's a mistake again. So this is on, these are little tables where you've suggested how long it will take for people to, to get to the new hubs. And this is relevant because of the feedback that came out in the consultation and in the Equality Impact Assessment. For some reason, you have put the, the Spital Street site as being four minutes away from Burngrief Surgery, four minutes walk away. I would say that that's not accurate. That's probably a four-minute Olympic walk sprint to, to the surgery. And I would say an able-bodied person at that and vulnerable people would not take four minutes to walk from Burngrief Surgery to Spital Street, which requires at least a 10-minute straight walk and then a hill to, to, to climb up. And then on, I think this, the next mistake is, is an error as well. On Rushby Street, you've put that Page Hall Medical Centre is 21 minutes away. I would say it's a stone throw away, it's probably two minutes away from, from Page Hall. Probably a little bit longer from Uphol Street, but again, 31 minutes. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming you've made a slight error with these. Firth Park Surgery, 15 minutes walk away, it's not, I couldn't do it in 15 minutes. From where Firth Park is all the way up to Concorde, there's a hill. And again, you're, I'm, I'm assuming that these are able-bodied individuals that have exercised frequently and, and are physically fit. And, you know, I would probably take double that time to get up there. So I, I think there's a lot in here. I'm not entirely convinced that given the feedback, this is feeding into this pre-consultation business case. It feels to me like we are making it fit. And I've got to go back to answer to people in my room who were overwhelmingly against this and sort of speak to them about, well, you know, what is, what is the point? That's, that's the thing that came back to me, what is the point of this? It feels like the decision's already been made. And as patients, they have got to be at the heart of our decisions, not fancy new buildings that will look nice in an area. And, you know, I've been here before with other sort of investment, capital investments, where we have fancy new buildings that can be invested in, in areas. We talk about local regeneration and sometimes those buildings are then empty or not used, sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank, no, thanks, thanks for bringing all those points, Wood. I'm actually going to just leave that where it is because I think we've churned over a lot of this ground actually previously. And we are really, really pushed for time. So the remarks that have been made, some of these, we, we will put forward to the PCCC as concerns, whether they're answered today or not. So I, I think we'll move on from that, if that's okay. I've got, I, I want to just add myself, how will the development of hubs and relocation of some practices actually translate into better patient access to appointments? I think it's widely acknowledged that there are not enough hours available from GPs to give the appointments that people need. And the waiting times have gone up and up and up and up over the last decade. And that's still unaddressed by the issue of recruitment, which is way behind any targets that were set. So my, my issue is I can't see how this development actually helps at all with access to appointments. And it runs the risk of making it into a compound problem in that there still won't be enough appointments to have timely access to your GP and there'll be a problem for geographical access on top of that. So I just want to put that on the table. And just besides that, that it doesn't quite fit with our council policy of 15-minute neighbourhoods if we're moving services further away from some people's homes. And that there's a concern over meeting our carbon targets, especially as buses weren't considered as a determining factor of locate, choosing site locations. That seems to have been omitted. So I'm just going to put those points on, on the table and very quickly bring in councillor Wetherall, who hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
I've got to thank councillor Susanna, I mean, it's, it's covered everything, really. It's, it's a pleasure to just sit aside and just listen to all the points you put forward. And yourself, councillor Milson, it's, it's emotive, as you can see. And it's really nice to see you, the like, Lucy, when you came to see us, did what you did there. There's just one question, really. Thirty thousand, thirty thousand patients in one hub, you know, that's pushing it, I think. You know, Concorde Park, but, you know, we'll address that again later on. But if, if somebody doesn't sign it, if one of these doctors don't sign it, we want to keep their, their property. Is, is, does this mean that they're going to lose the funding to run that surgery?
It doesn't mean they're going to lose their contract or their funding to operate their surgery. What it means is that they won't take, they won't relocate to these premises. This is nothing to do with, you know, general practices are independent contractors. We hold a GMS, PMS or APMS contract with them. There will be absolutely no penalties for any practice who chooses not to further pursue this option. But what it does mean is that we cannot guarantee, at this point, any capital funding to improve those premises because we don't know if we will have it or not. So that's the opportunity that a practice loses if they withdraw from this, is whatever opportunities co-locating with wraparound services may bring them in these, in these, may bring them and their patients in these hubs. Sorry, just to go back, you mentioned you thought that 30,000 patients in a hub was pushing it. I just wondered if you could clarify what, what your concern was on that.
Well, give me, give me an average across city, I'll throw that one back to you. Give me an average, a GP surgery at moment, how many is in, how many patients are the in, a regular, just a, a normal day-to-day surgery across Sheffield?
It, it ranges significantly. We have some practices who have list sizes of 30,000. We have some practices who have list sizes of 1,500. So there's a really wide range. And I think what is really important here is that these buildings will be built to accommodate the footfall we need. And there's, and there is growth factored into those because we know that these areas will see development in the next few years. But what we are not doing is merging practices. This isn't about creating super practices or anything else. So each of those practices will continue as an independent business, seeing the patients that they currently see, seeing their patient list. It's up to them whether they choose to adjust what their internal processes are or not. You know, we offer support to practices who, who, who want to make process changes i- if, if, if they need that, as do time for care and other groups. But this is not about creating one single large practice. So each of those practices will continue to manage their own patient list. The buildings will be built to accommodate the footfall that we anticipate.
Okay, thanks. Right, we need to wrap up this item. And we, we have said that we'll send some comments and recommendations to the Primary Care Commissioning Committee, which meets on Thursday. And so I'm just going to whizz very quickly through some of the points that have been raised and which I, I feel we might want to put forward to that committee as the views of this committee. Firstly, the way in which data has been analysed and some of the potential inaccuracies in the reporting of numbers from the pre-engagement exercise. Asking the PCCC to look carefully at other offers in the carry-forward options, even though they don't seem to be going into the consultation. And that we're, we're concerned that the, that the carry-forward options aren't going to be consulted on. The issues of the impact, the Equities Impact Assessment and whether that, whether the issues raised through that are being addressed by the business case. And combining that with the negative patient response regarding travel times and accessibility geographically, whether those issues are being taken into account fully by the business case. And the four tests for change that councillor Mohammed mentioned, that people have said they can't travel further and that, and there's a very low engagement in the, in the first exercise of only two percent of patients. And so those are issues that we consider perhaps to undermine the, possibly to undermine some of the findings of the pre-engagement. And whether the issue of distance travel, travels to new sites has been properly taken into account and how it's been addressed in the business case. Some of the issues over the accuracy of travel times to some of the new sites. We, something seems to have gone a bit amiss on those. Will the transformation actually do anything to address the issue of lack of appointment availability to patients? Our carbon targets, use of buses to access the new sites and 15-minute neighbourhoods. And concerns that the consultation documents should set out matters more clearly and informatively. That's what I've drawn out of it. And so I'm going to look for a consent from the meeting that those are items that we should put forward to the PCCC on Thursday. Any dissent, raise your hand? Was that a dissent from, no, that was, okay. Okay, that's, that's excellent, thank you. And thank you so much for all your time and tolerating all our questions again. Item nine is next, which is our Integrated Care Board update, which this committee had requested. We are becoming pushed for time. And there's going to be a slide presentation, I believe, that members have received in advance of the meeting. So to save time on the basis that members can view that, I wonder how long will it take to go through the slides?
I'm not proposing to go through every single slide by any means. Most of the slides are really available as a resource pack for reference and more detail. So I think I'll probably actually go through probably four slides, five slides maximum, and I won't be reading them line by line.
Can you go like two, two, three minutes and then if there are any questions? This, this item is really an update. And I think I've got a couple of questions about the constitution, but they're very quick.
Thank you. So as, as this committee is, is no doubt well aware, the NHS is shifting to a much more collaboration and planning and locally-driven system. And a significant aspect of that is in effect about the NHS integrating with itself and moving away from a competition-based approach to greater collaboration. That said, there are significant impacts for us at a, at a local level. And one of the great opportunities of this is an increased focus on locally-driven services and locally-driven commissioning and locally-driven integration that improves outcomes for people, for citizens and patients. The changes establish the Integrated Care Board at South Yorkshire level, which will have some of the commissioning responsibilities delegated from NHS England and which will be required to deliver against the integrated care strategy. We expect that there will be a team within the integrated care system focused on Sheffield, very similar to current CCG arrangements. And that most of the decision-making very similar to current CCG arrangements, and that most of the decision-making will be delegated to place level. And an opportunity for us as a local authority will be to have places on the ICB, the Integrated Care Board, but also the Integrated Care Partnership and to be able to influence at place level, but also to be able to work at place level to ensure that services are designed with localities, neighbourhoods and residents and patients in mind. So this committee will retain its statutory responsibility for scrutiny of local NHS services and we will continue to have the Joint Health and Wellbeing Board and the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. The Integrated Care Board will be required to ensure that it is able to demonstrate how it is delivering on the health and wellbeing strategy for the city and responding to the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, which is, you know, which is very positive. In terms of considerations and opportunities, I, sorry, apologies, I haven't flicked through the slides. I thought that might just break my brain too much to speak and flick through the slides. But I just want to highlight some of the considerations and the opportunities. We will of course continue to work really closely with colleagues in other South Yorkshire councils in order to best influence the new system. And our local relationship with the NHS, both through the Joint Commissioning Committee and through the Care Partnership, will remain really critical and will be key to ensuring that we get the right mechanisms in the city for local delivery. Clarity on the governance relationship between the councils committees and the Health and Wellbeing Board and the Joint Commissioning Committee and the Healthcare Partnership are going to be really key. And we will of course be very happy to bring further updates to scrutiny as the, you know, as the details of that are worked through. But we very much expect to see that as a phased process with a number of steps to ensure that we are bringing all stakeholders, all partners in that process, in that system, together to deliver the best outcomes and to be confident of that. There are opportunities here. I think there are opportunities for members to get ahead and to start shaping things positively and looking at our relationships, not just as commissioners, but very much also in the delivery space. And we already have some of that work in the city around, for example, hospital discharge and working collaboratively with health partners across the system to improve the process and the customer experience, the patient experience in that area. I think the key for us in the council will be to ensure that we have the right relationships between the Education, Care and Families Committee, the Adult Health and Social Care Committee and the Integrated Care Board and to ensure that we are informing the Joint Commissioning Committee's advice and therein also the work of the Health and Care Partnership. I'm conscious that was a bit of a canter. There is a list at the back of the slide pack for those with a keen eye for detail, which sets out the current membership of the Integrated Care Partnership, Integrated Care Board. That's as up to date as we have it this week, but we of course, as I say, will be happy to bring back further updates.
Thanks ever so much. I've got a couple of very short questions about the constitution in terms of local authority representation. And so the Integrated Care Board will have four partner members, one of which is a partner member representing all four local authorities. Just wanted to clarify, is that a senior officer or an elected member?
My, oh, sorry, I forgot to press it off and on again. My understanding is that that will be a local authority officer, but having said that, I'm now looking at my colleagues to confirm.
The constitution states that it should normally be a chief executive or somebody who's able to act in a senior capacity, so it's not an elected member. I believe because there's two parts to the integrated care system, there's the formal statutory NHS body, which is the ICB, the ICP, which is the Health and Care Partnership across South Yorkshire, I do believe that there will be opportunities for elected members to be involved in the partnership. That partnership, as our colleagues in the ICS are terming it, is the conscience of the integrated care system that is responsible for setting the overall strategy. So if we can compare it to something, it is almost like a health and wellbeing board that sits across a much wider footprint, but with some different responsibilities.
Do you anticipate there'll be an elected representative from each of the four places on the partnership?
So I don't think the details of the partnership have been worked up yet. I believe that there will be some engagement with local authority partners, in particular elected members, in due course. I don't have the detail on how that one's going to work, I'm afraid.
Okay, and then just want to refer to the appointment and removal of the chair of the ICB. It is stated in the constitution 3.13.5 in the draft that I've seen, the chair of the ICB may be removed by NHS England, subject to the approval of the Secretary of State, which all seems to go way over the heads of anyone on a local footing. So is there any mechanism built in for local accountability of the chair?
So I'll try and answer that one, recognising that I'm not an officer in the ICB. There are certain parts of the constitution which are nationally proscribed. So if you look at the constitutions of all ICBS, there are a lot of similarities across them. The chair of the ICB is an NHS England appointment, therefore as the employing body, there would be something that rests with them in terms of termination. I think if there were concerns raised by locally elected members which were fed into NHS England, they should be taken into account.
I'm sure we'll never need to get there. Any other questions? Councillor Oxley.
Thank you, Chair. There's obviously a risk when you go to a different governance system. I'm interested in your opinion in terms of what concerns you have, but then what are the potential benefits that we'll see by moving to this different structure?
That's a great question. I think some of the challenges will be about how we work collaboratively across the commissioning space and the delivery space and how we bring that together at a place level and how we ensure that that has the best outcomes down through localities and neighbourhoods and for residents. It is, we have huge challenges in the city, as we know, in terms of health and health disparities and outcomes in different areas of the city. And it is very important, as I'm sure you would all agree, that we maintain that local accountability. That said, I think there are huge opportunities here as well to work differently and focus, as I say, at a local level. So I think that's both a challenge, but also absolutely the right challenge and a golden opportunity. But it will be a change in terms of some of the key relationships, both within the NHS itself and working through how we manage delegation at place level in a way that works for all of the stakeholders and partners in the city.
So yeah, it's quite nice to be asked an opinion. I don't know if that's dangerous or not, but I'll give you a few thoughts on that one. So I'm just going to echo what Jo's said there around maintaining accountability to local people. Now, I think we've got a fairly strong commitment from our system that they want as much to be done on what they term as a place footprint, so a city or town footprint, and then down into neighbourhood levels, because we know that's the thing that's probably going to make the biggest impact on the health inequality. That is, you know, formally part of the raison d'etre, if you like, of the ICB. So we would want to see that, but obviously there is a concern as you move to more centralised governance structures. The second thing is that there will be financial challenges in the NHS, you know, I'm not going to go into them, they're all in public, that's something that we do need to recognise. There's probably something about thinking about how we work differently rather than the traditional approach in the NHS over many years has been to claw back on service offer. And the final thing that I've got, just some thoughts around, obviously as the governance has changed quite significantly here, what we've seen is that the executive officers will be continuing in their roles in local places. What we will be losing from the 1st of July is that significant lay member approach that we've had in our CCGs and also the clinical voice at decision-making level. So from Sheffield CCG, there will be a loss of eight local clinicians that are working out in communities advocating for their patients and that will be lost from the decision-making structures. So those are some concerns. I think that, you know, we've worked in a joint way with Sheffield City Council for a number of years. I think the Joint Commissioning Committee for Health and some elements of social care has been a success for the city. And I think one of the reasons it has been successful is the balance has been made up between locally elected members and clinicians that are elected by a body of their peers to represent localities across the city. Now, those governance structures, particularly around health and wellbeing boards and around joint commissioning committees, is a 50-50 arrangement between the NHS and the local authority and it may be something, as a local authority, that if the clinical and lay voice has been valued, that you may wish to build into future governance arrangements at that local level.
Any other questions? In which case, I think we note the update report with thanks and look forward to hearing the next stage, assuming it all goes live on the 1st of July, with or without complete governance systems. Thank you. So our next item is something that's been brought to the committee regarding a proposal to relocate step-down beds from Wainwright Crescent to a new location in the city. We've been asked to consider whether this proposal constitutes a substantial variation to provision. So we're not particularly scrutinising the detail of the plan itself unless it relates to whether we consider it to be a substantial variation. I'm just welcome our visitors in. I'm sorry, I'm so short-sighted, I can't see your names. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
So my name's Greg Hackney, I'm Senior Head of Service in Sheffield Health and Social Care.
Thank you. And I'm Heather Burns, I'm Deputy Director of Mental Health Transformation in Sheffield Clinical Commissioning Group.
Lovely, thanks. So we understand you've brought this report for us to consider whether the proposed relocation of this service constitutes a substantial change in service provision. So if you'd like to present your report.
Thank you. So we're here today to talk about our step-down facility, which is Wainwright Crescent. So this is an 11-bedded unit designed for working-age adults as they step down for acute hospital care. So over the course of probably the last six to 12 months, we've been evaluating the options available to refurbish Wainwright Crescent to meet minimum standards of quality and safety. As part of that work, we established that actually it was not feasible to refurbish the existing site to an adequate standard to meet those minimum standards. And as part of an appraisal of the options available to us at Sheffield Health and Social Care or Sheffield City Council, as we currently lease the building, we established a site at Lightwood, which is attached to some of our other facilities. As part of that work, we've gone through quite considerable consultation and I would go as far as to say co-production with our service users, carers and families in the design and evaluation of that estate. So to give some examples of that, we've worked with service users, carers and families to think about the decoration of the estate, the design of some of the kitchen and living space and also some of the design of the garden space. The changes that we've set out within the report represent a significant improvement to the environment and to the safety and also to the therapeutic aspects of the estate for this group of people. And that is endorsed by the service users that we've spoken to about these changes. Within the paper, I think I've set out that we've spoken to just around 50% of the service users that either have accessed or are accessing our respite facilities at the moment, step-down facilities, sorry, or prospective service users that could access our step-down facilities in the future. So we feel that we have adequately consulted with a wide range of people about the options to relocate and today, as you said, we're seeking support to continue with that relocation based upon the consultation and engagement that we've taken to date. I don't know if Heather wants to add to that.
I think councillors, this is around a quality improvement. So what service users have told us is that the facilities that we're currently using don't really meet their expected standards. So for example, mixed use of bathroom facilities, people don't have en suite facilities, the staff changing facilities aren't particularly up to the right standard and particularly were tested in Covid. So this is around not only an improvement to the quality of the environment that will enable people to recover from their mental ill health, having been in inpatient care, but it also does provide a more therapeutic environment. So the location is on the edge of countryside, we know how important green spaces to people's mental wellbeing, there are much better facilities around sports and leisure, there's the swimming pool just on a five-minute bus drive away. So we feel that it actually provides people with a much more therapeutic environment than the one that the service is currently located in. And I think what the Care Trust have demonstrated is that they've done as many improvements as they can to Wainwright Crescent. It's actually now taking us forward to provide services for the future, for the future population of people that may need to access that service.
Thank you. That's really nice and clear, thanks. I'll take questions. Councillor Oxley?
I think I've got no issue whatsoever in terms of what you're proposing, it's absolutely the right thing to do. Just one question in terms of what would we do with the original site? What's in the plans for that?
So I'll take that question. So the tendency that we have at the moment at Wainwright Crescent is a tendency at will with Sheffield City Council, meaning that there is limited notice period provided. We are committed to continue to work in partnership to maintain that building. At the moment, we are consulting on using that building for our newly established assertive outreach team. And this is a community-based team that works with people that are typically, unfortunately, from a socially deprived background. And we're trying to support them to improve their engagement with our community and health services. So it's in a very good location for that service. At the moment, we are continuing to go through a consultation around that change, so it's not a confirmed move. But that is what we're considering for the site.
So in essence, it's due for the price of what? It's a bug-off deal.
I think I've got Lucy and then Councils Murphy, Weatherall and Mohammed.
So just a couple of questions. And first of all, Health Watch has mentioned in the report as having fed into the collaboration. We have had discussions around Wainwright Crescent, actually in a slightly different context, I think. So we haven't heard directly from anybody who uses the service in the step-down capacity with regards to their views on this move. So just to be clear about that, I'm not able, unfortunately, to bring any insight in terms of how people feel about this proposal. I've got a question though about carers specifically, because the potential impact here is actually almost more for carers than it is for the people actually staying in the service, because they might be the people that have to travel just that little bit further to reach the people that they want to come and visit. And it wasn't clear in the report whether you spoke, how many carers you've spoken to. You did just mention just then speaking to carers, but I just wondered if you could give any more detail about that. And I particularly was struck when I looked at the map, actually, that although it's only a mile further away than Wainwright, it very much firmly takes it to a very, what looks like quite a removed part of the city. If you're a family that lives, say, in the north of the city and you're told that your relative or your family member is going to move to a facility that's that far out, I can just imagine that that might be quite off-putting or quite a barrier to people feeling able to access that service. And the second point was just around the reduction in beds. So I sort of read the report and it referenced that this would be managed through flow and that was kind of quite technical language. I was like, what does this look like in practice? I'm assuming it means that some people are going to get to stay there less time. And it didn't really describe what that meant in human terms for those people and what conversations have been had with those individuals who might be most impacted by that change about the alternatives for that.
So from a commissioning perspective, we were concerned about the reduction in beds. But when we looked at that in detail with Sheffield Health and Social Care colleagues, what we recognised is that there'd been a lot of people over the past number of years where they'd had a very lengthy stay, not as the best appropriate placement. And the reference to flow is that the care trusts have been doing a lot of work on trying to promote discharge in a timely way, so that people are only staying in inpatient or step-down facilities for the amount of time that they really need. So that coupled with the fact that Wainwright, they weren't able to utilise all the bed space because of the design of the building and some of the walls were flimsy and so you could hear through the walls from between rooms. So they've actually not been running at full capacity. So working with the care trust on the rest of the work that they've been on flow, we felt that that was actually not going to have a significant impact in terms of the available facilities. And because the care trusts are doing a lot of work on flow in general around discharge, we feel that the length of stay is also reducing and that they'll be able to compensate that from that activity.
Well, I think you summarise that very well. I think my main only addition to that is that, you know, we know as part of consultation through Health Watch, actually, as part of our clinical and social care strategy, that service users, families and carers have told us that they don't want to remain in restrictive environments longer than necessary. So I appreciate that flow is probably an unhelpful word, but thinking about actually being more efficient in the delivery of our care and reducing the length of stay that people spend in hospital or in a step-down facility is seen as a positive step. And I think that the environment actually will be more conducive to that because it will be more therapeutic and hopefully people will feel the benefit from that environment in a shorter period of time and enables people to move into the community more quickly. In response to your question about the location of Beech, that is something that we have considered. And you're right, it is a relatively small distance away from Wainwright Crescent, but it is further away from the centre of Sheffield. We recognise the important role that carers and families play in people's recovery and where unfortunately there have been similar situations where we've had to place people even outside of Sheffield. We have either remunerated or arranged for transport for carers in order to access facilities. And we would certainly be considering the same for anybody needing to travel to Beech. It is a voluntary arrangement for anybody to access a step-down bed. And that would be something we'd be talking to the service users around their family about prior to doing, to moving them there. There would always be the option for people to return home immediately. And that's obviously anywhere that we pick within Sheffield, because it's a single site. It's going to be closer or further away for some people, unfortunately. I hope that answers your questions.
Can I just come back very briefly? So given what you've just said about it being a voluntary arrangement, I would just be interested to know about the demographics of the people that do end up in those beds? Because I'm just wondering whether or not it is off-putting for people from certain parts of the cities and certain communities. It may already be off-putting because it's viewed as somewhere quite separate to their own location or their own family. And I just wondered if that was already the case and whether this would make it more so. But I don't expect you to answer that today, but it just would be something that I would be curious about.
I'd be very happy to do some more work around that and provide some narrative for you. I mean, we know that people experiencing mental health problems, actually, know already, tend to be from a smaller population of our demographic of Sheffield and not necessarily representative of our society as a whole. And we do certainly need to consider that as part of the design of all of our services. And we've tried to account for that within the quality and equality impact assessment that we presented to you. But I'd be very happy to do some more detailed work on that if that's helpful.
Sorry. Can I just ask Lucy to, can you just comment there on whether you feel that's an element of the work that's been done so far towards this report? Is that an element that you feel needs further work and that wants to come back to this committee? Or something that can be addressed outside?
Good question. I guess one of my concerns is it feels as though this decision has partly already been made because the property's already been refurbished and we've been talking very much about the sort of co-production of, you know, talking about decor and so on with clients. So I guess I'm slightly confused about where we are in the decision-making process. So I think the answer to that question, Councilor, is slightly skewed by, I don't really know where we are in the process here. So whether or not it needs more work to come back to this committee, I'm not quite clear.
So just to try and reiterate, the brief for this committee on this item is to just determine whether we consider the proposal to be a substantial variation in provision. So if there's more questions around the drop-down of one out of 11 beds, then that would, I think that would be of concern to this committee. But I'm not sure if that's quite where you're going with the question.
I think my greater concern is more about barriers for certain communities and certain demographics accessing it, which may be exacerbated by the location being pushed even further south in the city. So I think that was my greater concern rather than the production in beds. I will say that, having said we have no feedback on Wainwright, we have in the past had feedback on Wainwright and I know that the service is really well-regarded in terms of the staff team and clearly the current facilities that they've got are desperately in need of improvement. So, you know, I don't want to make a, put a barrier in the way of what overall seems as though it could be a really positive development. But I do think there's a caveat about thinking about who is getting to use this service. Are there any existing disparities and who is taking up that offer of support? And will they be exacerbated further by this change? Has that been well enough considered? Would be at the centre of my sort of concern, really.
May I respond to that? This change will not create any additional barriers to any of our communities from accessing a step-down arrangement. And I hope that the paper illustrates that. But there is, obviously geographically, this is a slightly, a change in location and arguably that'll be further away for some people. I actually think we're likely to have the complete opposite effect. And I would invite any of you, if you'd like, to visit the facilities, but they are significantly improved. And I think that actually, you know, the service users that we've taken to look around the facilities have asked for various changes to be made, but have said that they would love to see, to stay there. And I think we might find that actually we've got more demand for people to access those facilities. And we need to now focus on making sure that that is married up with the service model and how we deliver a service from that site and linking in with the voluntary and community and social enterprise and the development of our primary care networks as we transform sort of our community services too. But I can give you that assurance. I'm confident that there will not be an adverse impact on people being able to access the services.
Can I come back as well? I think the other thing that Greg alluded to earlier, this is a voluntary, it's not an admissions unit, so people can choose whether to and indeed do choose whether or not to go into step-down currently at Wainwright. But I think, as Greg said, the quality improvements, the fact that there are en suite facilities, good kitchen facilities, it's close to supermarkets, a choice of supermarkets, I think would make people be more likely to choose. And they're not travelling there every day. When they actually are discharged, they're taken to the unit by transport by Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust. So it's not like they're kind of coming from home to visit it every day. And the journeys, obviously, they can visit the families, they can meet in the city centre. They're not detained patients. They're there voluntarily.
Okay, thank you. Realised I should probably have declared an interest because I do know a service user of the Wainwright. So just to be upfront about that. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Chair. Thank you. My question's been answered. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Murphy. Council Weatherall, a question?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm not going to declare an interest, but I know somebody I'll look after. He hasn't been to these facilities, that's why I'm not going to declare an interest. But you're right about the noise, you know, the wall next door and people who have this, you know, as it comes for the step-down. I know all about change, you know, and change for someone who's mentally ill. It's, you just don't want to. You don't, you know, you don't want anything in your life. And I just wondered, Chair, if we could have a, because, you know, it's going to be an upheaval for people who's using it now to move into this new facility. And I'm really pleased it's a nice green area up there and they can get out and about and have that, loads of walks and get into nature if they want to. But the thing is, I just wonder if we can take them up on the offer of the site visit? You know, because that's, you know, it's really nice to hear that. But I wondered as well, Chair, if you could raise with them and have a, see if we can have a six-months report back just to see how it has changed, if there's any feedback from the... I'll leave that to you.
Okay. So I think I'd like to propose that we don't consider this as a substantial change to the service, but that we'd like a report back. And if councillors are interested in a site visit, that would be really nice if we could arrange that so we can put a bit more context to what we've read on paper. That might be useful. So if councillors would like to take that up, then you can get in touch with Emily if you'd be willing to host that.
Yes. I think that's a great idea, actually, that six months. I'm sure you would have been doing a six-months evaluation anyway, but I think to do that in a way that, you know, reports back to yourselves and actually, Lucy, that might be where we can feed in Health Watch a little bit more as well to just get a sense from service users how they feel it's improved the quality. Have I understood that we can go ahead?
I think that's my recommendation, that we don't interfere with this process by taking it as a substantial variation. So it's not, you don't need to bring it for any formal consultation, but that this committee would like to receive an update report in six months to include the demographic questions that Lucy asked as well? Is that acceptable to the committee? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
So the questions have been really thought-provoking for us, I think, certainly for me, because I think you're absolutely right. Why are we doing this? Well, we're doing it for the better outcome for patients and we need to evidence that. So and also to check that people aren't disadvantaged. So thank you. You've given us a good steer forward as well, I think, in terms of implementation.
That's brilliant. That's really good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So we're two minutes off our guillotine. So we just have any other business, which unless there's anything really burning that can be dealt with in one minute, the only item of any other business is the work programme. So the work programme will be brought to members of the committee by email for consideration and we can take any suggestions for items via that route after this meeting, if that's acceptable to everybody. Okay, there's one item I want to put forward to that, which is around the CQC report, which was raised in one of the public questions specifically around maternity services and mental health improvements and workforce. So that reflects the question that came in at the beginning as well. Okay. So I think we're in the enviable position of finishing two minutes early. Excellent. Thank you, everybody.